Cynthia, it looks like who's running the aquarium right now?
I just brought the entire city of Virginia Beach with me, sir.
But anyway, we're glad to have you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. It's an honor today to present the Virginia Aquarium Annual Report for fiscal year 2017. Did you know, I'm gonna start off with a little trivia, that a group of whales is called a pod? And did you also know that for whales, they have a coordinated effort in completing all of their tasks? These unique animals value teamwork and focus on adding value for their group effort. So today, I'd like to introduce my pod that I've brought with me. The chair.
I've been called a lot of things.
The Chair of the Aquarium Foundation, Delsino Miles; the President of the Aquarium Foundation, Lee Ensminger; the Vice President, Sal DeBarro; our Secretary, Craig Grube; and our Treasurer, Ellen Keeter.
We're glad to have all of y'all over here.
I also brought my great team of employees with me as well. And Jim Wood and John Earn round out this great group of people as our council liaisons. So I'm honored to present our annual report. And what a record year we had. We're in our 31st year, and we had the highest revenues and the highest attendance ever. So before I begin describing what we do, I think it's important to describe why we do it. Our mission is to inspire conservation of the marine environment. And so during the next 15, 20, 25 minutes or so, I promise I'll keep it brief, I'm excited to share with you what and how we do it. And of course, I'm gonna connect it all back to our mission. So as I go through my presentation, and each section could be a presentation unto itself, feel free to ask questions, or if you'd like me to follow up, I'd be happy to do so. If you'd like, you can follow along in the annual report that's at your place. And after this meeting, I hope you'll take this back with you and read it in detail. Or more importantly, as some of you have already found out, have a little fun with it, figuring out your birthday and which animal is at the aquarium that you're associated with. So let's begin. Education. As I mentioned, inspiring conservation of the marine environment is why we exist. But we do this through education. Last year, going into our school systems throughout Hampton Roads, we reached 16,000 students and 3,000 teachers. The numbers that came to the actual aquarium on school field trips reached almost 50,000 school group children. As you know, focusing on STEAM, that's Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics, prepares our students and our adults for today's careers and careers of the future. We lead the way in teaching science. From our sea level rise, climate change workshops, to teaching biology, geology, and chemistry, we're the leaders in teaching science. And guess what, guys? We make it fun. Of course, we offer many educational opportunities, and some of them are free of charge. Thanks to generous donors such as Eleanor and Henry Watts, we have featured world-renowned speakers. And one example this year was Chris Fisher of Osearch. He talked about tagging sharks. And does everybody know who Mary Lee is? So we watch Mary Lee on the internet, because she's a tag shark. So let's talk a little bit about research. Again, we inspire conservation of the marine environment through research. I'll only highlight a few of our research programs, but the bottom line that I'd like for you to remember is that we're nationally and internationally recognized for our research. And of course, all of this is funded by our nonprofit through donations and grants. So first, we'll talk a little bit about our Osprey Watch. The Chesapeake Bay is home to the largest population of breeding ospreys. Did you all know that? But this hasn't always been the case. In the 1970s, the use of DDT made eggshells so thin that the adults crushed them when nesting. Their comeback has been incredible. Our team actively monitors the Lynn Haven and Back Bay areas to ensure survival of this vulnerable species. Our humpback whale unusual mortality event. Humpback whales, especially juveniles, visit the Virginia coast each winter. Unfortunately, last year, and of course continuing into this year, which we'll talk about in a moment, there were many whales throughout the Atlantic coast that came ashore, necessitating NOAA's decree of an unusual mortality event. But thanks to our Stranding Response Team, we were involved from the beginning. We take samples and we conduct necropsies. And we send these to NOAA, and we're the leading organization in determining causality of this unusual mortality event. Most recently, as of yesterday, we did respond to a stranded juvenile whale. And we conducted a full necropsy yesterday. Actually, Channel 13 filmed us. And we've sent that off. The determination has not been found yet for the cause of that death, but I'm assured in a few months, we will discover that and learn from that. Also, through a generous donation from Jane Batten, our team participates in coral restoration around the world. We study on working for restoration and repopulation in corals. This research not only helps corals around the world, but from what we've learned, we're able to bring it back and actually propagate corals within the Virginia aquarium. Let's talk a little bit about conservation. Let's talk about our Peer Partner Program. Has anyone heard of this program? This is a world-renowned program where we partner with local fishermen with our stranding team. This allows us to rehab turtles shortly after being hooked by a fisherman. Before, many fishermen would simply cut the line, and the turtle would swim away with the hook embedded inside of us. With our program, they're able to phone us, save the turtle, and we can get the hook out in a faster manner. This past year, since our inception, we've saved and released over 100 turtles with this great program. Let's talk about sensible seafood. So everybody knows, if you've attended our event in the month of May, we really know how to throw a great party. But did you know, throughout the year, that we partner with 70 local businesses and restaurants in sourcing and serving sensible seafood? I've placed a pocket guide for you at your place, so you can carry this with you in your wallet, and so you can ensure when you're eating out, or you're at the grocery store, you're ensuring that you're buying sustainable seafood. I want to point out that this program is really wonderful, because no taxpayer dollars are used. 100% of the seafood fest proceeds and sponsorships fund this program. Let's talk a little bit about our Stranding Response Team. As I mentioned earlier, in the research that we do on whales and marine mammals, but we're also responsible for dolphins, seals, sea turtles, and yes, even the occasional manatee. Our team responds to strandings 24 hours a day, yes. And did you know we're responsible for the entire coast of Virginia? That's our team. So last year, we responded to 349 animals. Unfortunately, 279 of these animals were deceased. But even deceased animals can tell us something about what's happening in our ocean through samples and our necropsy. I am happy to tell you that we rehabbed and released 45 stranded animals last year. So there is good news, I promise. So let's talk about some fun things. The animals. So what would an aquarium be without our animals, right? They're the ambassadors to our guests, and we find that they're the best way to inspire conservation. So this past year, we had a cute animal tweet-off. So what do you do when you have cute animals? You share them. We helped instigate a global trend last year, bringing more eyes on the Virginia aquarium. Our tweet appeared on Good Morning America, Fox News, The Today Show, The Washington Post, to name a few. Are you ready for this? We reached 140 million people with our story. 140 million people. And this equated to $1.46 million in free advertising. And I say, who needs a commercial during the Super Bowl when you have this kind of free advertising? Now, some of you might not call these guys cute, but we had an incredible surprise last August, after our beloved female Komodo dragon passed away. We had a surprise. We had the birth of two Komodo dragons that actually incubated and hatched on exhibit. This amazing feat helps us contribute to the species survival program of these endangered animals. You can see one of the pictures of the little cute babies there. So our changing exhibits. We focused on four changing exhibits during the last fiscal year, and these really help illustrate the importance of conservation and the science in the world around us. I was excited to play with little James Wood when he came to Smokey the Bear and Yes, the grandson. When he came to see Smokey Bear and Woodsy Owl. And in January, we'll host Here Be Dragons, and I'm hoping that little Georgie's gonna come out and play at Here Be Dragons. But let's talk a little bit about our capital campaign, and I'm so glad that our board is here today. So so far, to this point, I've showed you individual pieces and how they shape our current reality. But let's look forward with our capital campaign. We know that our Marsh Pavilion is over 20 years old, and it really hasn't emerged as the destination that we had hoped it would be. We'll begin renovations and hopefully change that perception. And as part of this project, we will also have a new veterinarian center. Right now, we have a wonderful partnership with Animal Control. However, we know this can't be a permanent solution. Our newly constructed veterinarian center will give us and provide the highest level of quality care for our animals. We do have 10,000 animals that we have to care for every day, and you can see that this need is long overdue. All right, this one's a mouthful. The Darden Mid-Atlantic Marine Animal Conservation Center. The current Stranding Center has been a necessary facility to have for our stranded animals. However, we've outgrown it many times over. The new Darden Center will elevate the level of care we're able to provide to our marine mammals and sea turtles right on our own campus. Let's talk a little bit about our capital campaign. Beginning in June 2015, we launched our capital campaign. The foundation commenced on a fundraising campaign for the purpose of raising money for the Marsh Pavilion, the Vet Center, and the Darden Marine Animal Conservation Center. The Joshua P. and Elizabeth D. Darden Foundation gave the single largest gift in the aquarium's history at $2.5 million, thus naming the facility the Darden Animal Care Facility. The capital campaign has raised, are you ready for this? $13,577,790 to date in gifts and pledges from 129 donors. And these donors include corporations, individuals, and foundations. I'm excited that the public phase of our capital campaign will kick off this spring, and plans are to generate an additional gift in the amount of $1 million by December 2018. Now, here's a really great story. Additionally, we had a separate campaign going to raise $2 million for planned giving. Our goal again was $2 million. To date, we've raised $2,874,551, and we have pledges from 19 donors thus far. So we've exceeded that goal. So I'd just like to take a moment and recognize Russell Turner of my staff. For those that know Russell, he's a rock star in the fundraising world, and he deserves the credit, along with our board, for raising these private dollars. Thank you, Russell. It's been amazing. Okay, now my favorite part of the presentation, the financials. You can't have an annual report without your financials. So as a reminder, the aquarium is a public-private partnership between the city of Virginia Beach and our nonprofit 501(c)(3) Aquarium Foundation. We have a legal agreement, and it spells out everything, but in a nutshell, and Mark, you can get on me about this, but in a nutshell, the city provides the funding for the buildings and the day-to-day operations, and the aquarium provides the funding for the exhibits, and they're the stewards of our animals. Let's talk a little bit about our operating revenue. You can see admissions revenues at 43%. You can see that the city of Virginia Beach, through admissions and theater, has about $6.9 million. And you can see that the foundation, they receive $1 for every full-price ticket that's sold. The foundation receives, to fund the changing exhibits, about $300,000. Educational programs. So if you've had your child's birthday party, or you've sent them to summer camp, or you've taken one of our boat trips for dolphin watching or whale watching, you've contributed to the foundation's revenue to the tune of about $1 million a year. Facility use and concessions. So hopefully, you've shopped in our gift shop. We have two of them. The city receives about $1.6 million a year in gift shop sales, and a little over $36,000 a year for our facility rental. The foundation is very entrepreneurial. I mentioned the boat trips on the last slide. On this slide, you can see that we have our adventure park. I know the mayor was really great at zip lining. We have our photo vendor.
Remember it well.
We have our restaurant and caterer, and then we have the facility rental use for the foundation's portion. You can see how that generates almost $2.6 million a year. All of our grants are run through the foundation. And so, does anybody have the dolphin license plate? Thank you, John. So we receive about $56,000 a year in state funding from the license plate, and then we have federal grants of almost $400,000 a year. These grants are from NOAA, DEQ, and the National Marine Fisheries, just to name a All right, contributions. So I talked a little bit about the capital campaign, and you can see, last year, we had almost $4 million in contributions. Many of those donors that paid for the capital campaign have pledged over a series of years, so you'll see those contributions come in over the next four years. We also have many in-kind contributions. I'm gonna name a few. Williamsburg Winery, O'Connor's Brewing. I kinda see a theme here, but... We also receive many items for our silent auction for some of our charity events. So you can see, last year, we exceeded $4 million in contributions for the Aquarium And membership. So the city of Virginia Beach receives over $1 million in membership fees. And the foundation, if you buy a higher-level membership, we call those the philanthropic memberships, the foundation receives that, and that was about $9,000 last year. So a total of revenues at $16.6 million last year. Pretty good year for us. So let's talk about how we actually spend that money. Contractual services. So for the city of Virginia Beach, we have credit card fees, printing, advertising, lease and rental, movie royalties, and general maintenance and repair. And then there's the lovely internal services, such as risk management, com IT. Of course, the foundation has some contractual services fees. We have legal fees. We have advertising. We have our boat vendor that we actually have to pay, and we also have repair and And please costs. So if you know you run a business, your employees usually cost you about half or a little bit more. Our employees make up about 53% of our expenditures. All of our employees are city of Virginia Beach employees. The foundation just reimburses the city for any foundation-supported jobs that we have. And you can see that that is about $6.6 million a year in total employee costs. Supplies. So if you have 10,000 animals, you kinda have to feed them, right? So we spend quite a bit in food for our animals. All of our animals receive restaurant-quality food. We have medical care for our animals, and of course, other animal supply care. The foundation also has medical supplies, equipment, educational supplies, and supplies in our research and conservation. I'll move through this quickly. I know it's just enthralling. Other charges. Of course, there's always the other category for the city. This would be things like utilities for our Stranding Center, travel and postage, the lease and rental for our Marine Animal Conservation Center that we're leasing right now. And for the foundation, we have paid internships. We have animal acquisitions. We have telecommunications. And we do have our portion of the rent for our Stranding Center. And of course, like any good business, we have depreciation. Anything over $5,000, we capitalize and we depreciate on a standard schedule. So that would be any vehicles the foundation owns, any of our equipment that we own as But let's talk about the net revenue. So I want to focus on this slide, because this slide's pretty important to me. As you can see, not only did we not take any general fund money last year, we returned to the city of Virginia Beach over $600,000 in the general fund. This does not count, and it's not in the annual report, the admissions tax and the sales tax that the aquarium generates each year, and that's about $1 million that we give to the general fund through those two taxes. So I'm really proud of this slide. So let's look forward. So our past successes notwithstanding, we do have some challenges. We have aging infrastructure. Beyond the Marsh Pavilion that we talked about, three of our largest exhibits, the Shark Tank, the Seal Tank, and the Turtle Tank, are over 23 years old, and they need to be repaired or replaced in the near future. Leadership changes. We were fortunate to have Lynn with our department for as long as we did, but leadership change means an opportunity to thoroughly review our practices and look for new opportunities. I know the city manager and the deputy city manager are actively engaged with our work, and we're moving forward with great things, including our strategic planning process. This past year, we partnered with Impax Research to better understand our audience. And next week, I'm excited, because we kick off our strategic planning process, and the mayor, Jim Wood, and John Earn have all agreed to participate. So I'm very excited about that. Thank you. Last week, I was really excited, because I read an article about the national aquarium's economic impact in the state of Maryland. According to the article, the national aquarium, while they have 1.3 million in visitors, and we have about 700,000, according to the article, the national aquarium generates for the Maryland economy $450 million. So I'm excited, as part of our strategic planning process, to understand what our aquarium does for the city of Virginia Beach, the Hampton Roads, and the Commonwealth of Virginia. So stay tuned. Business intelligence. So we partnered with the city's Department of IT, and they've launched a new tool called Business Intelligence, and they've collected a lot of data. We've developed a team to go through and look at, how can we use this data for the answers that we need and to make business decisions? Such as, who buys our memberships? How often do they renew? Where do they come from geographically? Probably Kemsco. So success. So I've just reviewed the past year, but I thought it would be fun to spend the next 60 seconds sharing with you what a day at the aquarium is like. all connects to our mission. But we really couldn't do it without the city of Virginia Beach, the city council, and our citizens. I'm honored to serve as the interim director for the Department of Aquarium and Museums, and I'm eager to engage with our community and guests. As you know, we operate in a really complex environment that's constantly providing new challenges, but it also provides us opportunities for growth and success. It's always our goal to educate, inspire, engage, and empower our guests for the conservation of the marine environment. Together, we can build a bright future for the Virginia aquarium. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. It was a great presentation. Jim Wood has a comment or a question?
Yeah. I didn't see it up there, but you were talking, when you were doing the financial stuff, you've got a couple after-hours programs, that's something about the mermaids and monsters and things like that. Does that have an appreciable impact on revenue?
It does. So we've made a concerted effort this past year to do some additional programs after-hours. We're open nine to five, but of course, you know, Ron Williams, he challenged us to do some extra things. And so we had Monster Madness this year. I know poor John Earn stood in line for an hour or so. But we had 2,000 guests, and we raised about 24,000 in revenues for the foundation through that. Mermaid Mondays, we've been growing Mermaid Mondays for about five years now. This year, I believe we exceeded revenues. We were about $50,000 in revenues. But I'm glad you mentioned those two, because we're really trying to look at some other after-hours programs for adults, such as adult overnights, which is a lot of fun. It attracts a lot of millennials, so you get to come spend the night sleeping in front of the Shark Tank. And then my favorite is the Valentine's Day event, where you can have a five-course gourmet meal, have a private table in front of the Shark Tank, have someone swim up with a message board, have a diver swim up with a message board with 42 characters or less, to tell your loved one something special. I know John's done that with his wife, so we're really trying to grow those.
We're not gonna be on four to do it this year, Mr. Wood.
It is a bargain at $189 a person, but where else can you do that?
I'm holding out auditions for mermaids.
But Mr. Wood, we really are trying to grow those after-hour events for revenues, and so far, we've seen some great success.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, John?
Well, I mean, clearly, it's a huge asset, not just for our residents, but for the people that come and visit Virginia Beach. It's one of the number-one things that people go and do when they're visiting us. But I think it's important, really, to talk also, and I know that Cynthia highlighted on the educational stuff. I mean, Mark Swingle actually manages millions of dollars' worth of educational grants to do a boatload of different...
Literally, a boatload, literally.
Things like that. And he's done a remarkable job with a facility that's really not up to bar. So I mean, the fact that we're gonna be able to get the new animal research center online here in the very near term is really huge. But the fact that we have a community that, for these assets, steps up every time, and the Aquarium Foundation is one of them, Sandler Center Foundation is another, and raises significant amounts of money, really allows us to do a lot of things with the city that we wouldn't be able to do on our own. And certainly, I think we need to recognize that there is that buy-in from the community for facilities like these, because you've got, I mean, a great board that steps up and Russell beats everybody up to raise some really good money there for it. And it's also great to have the depth in town on the bench. I mean, certainly, with Lynn leaving, I mean, she did a great job for us a lot of years, and we've had Cynthia be able to step up and not miss a beat. So I mean, that's, whenever you have a big change like that, there's always that concern. So thank you for that, Cynthia, and great year.
Other questions or comments? Cynthia, I speak for the council. I think you know we're all very fond of the aquarium, very proud of the accomplishments. I think you know we're all very fond of the aquarium, very proud of the accomplishments. If one thinks back long before Russell was over there, people thought, you know, this money couldn't have been raised for the first facility, if y'all remember. And to me, it was a maturing process for our city, showing that this city did have residents that cared, and it, from that point, you know, was successful in getting it started, and has done nothing but continue to be successful. So I think everyone has a lot of reasons to be very, very proud. So we thank you and your entire team, thank the board, thank the wonderful staff, you guys and ladies just do a superb job. And Russell, keep raising money. We'll see y'all later. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
That's right. That's, well, that's what I meant to say, Russell. I didn't, I didn't get to talk to you before.
All right, we're going to the Burton Station update. I see Phil Pulling getting ready to walk in.
Yes, sir. As we transition out, I want to thank everybody for coming for the aquarium brief. Good to see y'all, and thanks for what you do. We thought it was time to get back here in front of the city council. A lot of discussion about what we're doing with regards to Burton Station. I can assure you that the vice mayor is personally informed on Burton Station's progress, certainly on a monthly basis. And so today, we've got a couple folks that are going to join us and provide some of the, the infrastructure progress that we've made. And Mark, are you first up today? You do the short straw, so I'd like to introduce Mark Shea, our comprehensive planning coordinator.
Mark, we're glad to have you here.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. We're getting ready to do an update of the Burton Station SGA plan, and I just wanted to emphasize this is going to be a multi-departmental effort. It says "Planning and Public Works" on the slide. That's because just for the presentation purposes, the two major components that we're talking about today are going to be the planning process and then the actual projects that are already underway. The outline will go into the history of the Burton Station SGA plan, changes since the plan adoption, existing market conditions, and then the next steps for the planning process. And then I'll turn it over to Phil Pullin to do the city projects update, and then the various projects involved with that. And I just wanted to mention the core team within SGA is Kathy Warren, Ashby Moss, who's here, and myself. Just a little bit of history. These are the three alternatives, and actually, this plan is really going to be focused predominantly on the core area of Burton Station, the village area. And back in 2009, when the SGA plan was adopted, we had three different alternatives that were taken to the public. One was for low-density residential, one was high-density residential, and the third one was high-density commercial. And all of those centerpiece for all three of them was the golf course surrounding them. The stakeholders chose option one, which was the low-density residential. At the time, there was 31 existing homes, and the plan was to build 38 new single-family homes and have a corner shop, a senior living facility, kind of all the things you would find in a village, as well as a memorial park. And another key aspect that's changed is that Burton Station Road was to be terminated at the end of the village because of the golf course. And I'll show you here now that things have been changing rapidly in the past few years. The golf course has gone away. This is a slide showing the new outlet mall that's been developed. That's a huge change. And then Wesleyan Drive does not have an outlet over to, I think it's Robin Hood Road ultimately. So Burton Station Road now is envisioned to continue all the way through now. So the road network has changed to open that up to Miller Store Road. There's only about 10 or 12 houses remaining in the village area. 381 apartment project has been approved, and it's just waiting for the road improvements to be finished. And then there's a lot of airport authority land that's been rezoned to industrial land. This map right here kind of shows all that in its totality, and the purple kind of shows the road improvements, and a lighter purple just to the north of that is all the industrial land. There, we've superimposed the site plan for the proposed B2 rezoning, which is at the northeast corner of Outlet Mall Boulevard and North Hampton Boulevard.
That's this area right here. This is North Hampton. This is where Wesleyan Drive comes out, and this is Burton Station Road. And this is Tolliver Road, the new road that will be constructed that ties in the 380 apartments. This is a, this is a rezoned residential. This is the airport authority's real estate here and here, and they have three phases, one, two, and three for light industrial.
You said that one thing, rezoning has been submitted. It's not a rezoned property. Is that correct?
No.
Right. Okay, I'll make sure, because you can't read that from here, but I can see on Jessica's thing that's not an approved rezoning.
Right, right. It's just been submitted. And then this is the, it should say, proposed rezoning for Burton Station, Burton Crossing, and that should be under review in the early part of 2018. They are working on the traffic study and some of the major components of that.
John? I know we've had, I have yet to see one, but this is a pretty big parcel. We have that forestry plan, and talk about parking, and not doing the traditional thing, but getting aggregated space that really meant something versus just the dispersed typical, you know, this is that typical thing. It's not the policy design we said we had, which was our aspiration, which was, when are we ever going to see aspiration, or should we just change our policy because we never do it?
The evolution of this, and if you back up a little bit, one side, the evolution of what we can do with this property here has been a fairly lengthy conversation. As you know, the city of Norfolk owns this parcel, and then actually owns this parcel here. It's kind of a sawtooth. And...
What's that, John?
Currently is a residential. And the desire of the SGA was to create a, when they originally built, if you went back to those original plans, what they were doing is they were coming off Burton Station, and they were creating the residential piece right here with the golf course still wrapped around it, and potentially moving a commercial park into the, into using the lakes and the, and the golf course as kind of the environmental green space around the office park that was envisioned in the original plan. That was an idea in 2008 that went to you all for approval in 2009 as an SGA plan. The real reality of it is Norfolk decided to do away with their portion of the golf course and to move rapidly towards this Simon Outlet Mall here. And I think we're all very familiar with us having a master transportation plan that took Wesleyan Drive and went straight across, and that's how we were going to tie in the miller store, provide a grid network that was going to allow transportation to that off of North Hampton and get over to Miller Store and get to the old airport that way and connect there. The transformation of residential in here was, I guess you might say, a first-come, first-served. Somebody came in and said, "Look, we've got a plan. We'd like to accumulate the properties associated with all these landowners up here, and we would like to be able to move forward with the, let's say, the allocation of residential for the Burton Station SGA to support what the SGA envisioned to be the proper amount of residential in there." Subsequent to that, there was a component of creating light industrial and a component of creating retail. And so as, as the whole use of the property, the land use of Burton Station evolved, our conversations with the airport authority became very apparent that they had purchased all these, this assemblage of all these parcels here and up in here using FAA money. And the FAA is adamant and will not allow their land to be used for that residential component, and will not allow them to use that land for retail. But they support light industrial. And so, working with the airport authority, Barry and I spent numerous meetings with them, their staff, and then briefed their board several times. And that's how we got the evolution of this middle area that we originally envisioned potentially being residential, even though there are still some components in here of turning that into light industrial, to which they are ambitious and say this would be a great opportunity for them to convert that land into that.
That's great, but can you tell me why we get the same parking lot we get anywhere else and why we're not making any progress towards having the aggregated green space, which was my question?
Well, this piece of property in here has got an option to purchase. It's, the option to purchase was granted by the city of Norfolk to Nussbaum and Simon. We wanted to prevent any cut-throughs because the communities all in the neighborhood do not want folks to utilize whatever access, whatever was developed in here as a, as a cut-through that got through that to the Outlet Mall Road and in, and that became a traffic embargo. There was also a desire in the community meetings to see new-to-market entertainment and new-to-market restaurants. And so Nussbaum is working diligently to provide that opportunity and to market that on a national scale to try to evolve that.
I don't want to belabor the point, but we did go through and adopt the policy that said where we were trying to go in incentives, and all I'm observing is I've yet to see any new development come in that ever achieves it. So either the marketplace says it's not sustainable, we should change our policy, our incentives are not matched up with our appetite, and the market's not doing it. But this is a classic example of a fairly large parcel where if it ever had an opportunity to come into play, it should have, and it didn't. So either it's a policy mismatch, or it's a bad policy. I don't know which it is, but it's just an observation.
I might respond by telling you that the people in the business are, you know, the capitalistic aspect of what they spend their money on and how they develop it.
I'm with you.
They're kind of, they're kind of going that way, Mr. Moss, and I think you would be kind of sympathetic to how much direction you want us to really power down on.
I am. I'm just saying we should probably have, we have a policy guidance and a vision that is out of place with the marketplace. We ought to revise our policy.
Yes, sir.
And going to the specific property, and I do understand your point as far as it was a danger to kind of show the conceptual layout there, because we actually haven't started reviewing this, so there could be some staff changes or suggestions on how to improve the application. And then this slide pretty much shows a long-range strategy for the drainage in the area. There's a lot of drainage issues, and as Mr. Hanson was speaking of, those, those three areas of light industrial use would all be drained through a series of three separate lakes leading to Lake Wright. So that kind of shows that that really is crucial to happen prior to...
Well, that's a question.
I just want to make sure, because we know we ran into issues, you know, over at the lake, Jamestown Lake, you know, over there, is I hope that we're establishing the baseline water quality in Lake Lawson, because this is Burton Station Lake Outfall to Lake Lawson. So we will make sure that we know what the water quality baseline was in Lake Lawson before we started. So in the event that there is any issues about how whatever we've done has impacted the water quality of Lake Lawson, we will know what it was before we started, because that has come up in other developments that we've done, is who caused the problem and who shot John. So it's easy to get that baseline established before you start, you know, for the neighborhood.
The fall line for this property kind of wraps itself like this, and everything that's to the southwest of where I'm drawing this little line on the screen, that all flows this way. And only this area like this and the hard stand that we're creating here, this all drains into here, this will drain into here, the mobile home park drains into there, the truck stop all drains into there, and then a little fall line here, all this drains into North Hampton. Burton Station Lake has a project that you're going to discuss it, Phil, just to give you an idea of how complex the stormwater here. But the work that we've done with the airport authority is to work with them to create the, you know, the critical path activity today is, is not utilities, it's, it's not real estate, it's stormwater. And so in order for them to get their Phase One, their Phase Two south of that rail line, and their Phase Three, they had to create a chain of lakes so that the water quality leading into Lake Wright, which is a reservoir. It's not, it's not, it's a reservoir which feeds into the water system because the Norfolk Lake that feeds the, the treatment plant feeds off of Lake Wright. They needed to have a pretty extensive pond-to-pond-to-pond filtration system with tiered amounts to get into, to get into this final BMP that gets in down here. And this BMP will support the development of this property and ultimately, development of that property. And so there's a lot of synergism of everybody working together here, and we, we're pretty proud about the part we're playing of working collaboratively with everybody to try to get this accomplished. So that ultimately, that stormwater plan has been approved by the FAA and has been supported by the Airport Authorities Commission, and of course, Norfolk has the right to allow whatever. But they're part of this process of developing these parcels.
That means we will have a baseline water quality.
We'll have one coming out of our lake here, and this is yet to be determined, but they will going into here. I'm sure they will develop that once that BMP is, because they don't exist today, Mr. Moss.
Thank you.
Very good. All right.
Okay, and the market conditions, basically, only, there's only 21 property owners remaining on Burton Station that are residential and private ownership. In just the past year, the assessed values have dropped, dropped 27,000. I think there might have been a couple demolitions that led into that. Only 14 of the properties have improvements, not sure if they're all in livable houses, but none of those houses were valued at less than 50,000. So the neighborhood is somewhat deteriorating. And then the next steps, we're planning to meet with Burton Station Road residents in January 2018. Next slide should say February 2018, but that's when we're going to plan to hold a public meeting, and then brief Planning Commission City Council on the draft plan changes in March, and complete the plan amendment schedule for April or May. And it's a pretty aggressive schedule, but we're, we're doing more of a general neighborhood plan or SGA plan here, not with the hired consultant and all the urban design concepts, but it'll be more of just picking out where the land uses are, and most of the concepts that were set in motion with the original SGA plan will still apply for the areas outside of that central area. So with that, if there's any other questions, I'll hand it over to Phil.
Phil, we're glad to have you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I will describe real quickly the infrastructure that we are going to be building as part of the Burton Station corridor here. I will discuss the roadway improvements, the stormwater outfall improvements, sanitary sewer pump station, and a fire slash EMS station that are all going to be delivered in the very near future. I'll also discuss future phases of the roadway plan that we have. This is the overall master plan that Mark was referring to, and the first set of infrastructure is roadway improvements. And to orient you, and I have my own pointer, Dave.
Kind of skinny, Phil.
Yes, sir. The same, just the way you oriented it. Here's North Hampton Boulevard, Diamond Springs over here, Wesleyan over here, so there's existing Burton Station Road. We are going to be improving existing Burton Station Road to this point here, Tim Road, and delivering a new roadway we call Tolliver Road that Dave referred to that ends in a cul-de-sac right before the railroad tracks. Our, one of our top project managers, Jessica Blackburn, is here today. She's the manager of these projects, and they've been advertised for construction. And we are opening bids in December. We will go to construction in about January, February of next year and be complete in the summer of 2019. Total project cost of $15 million. And again, these two projects will be built together as one project. Let's see, and what will they look like? Burton Station Road is a two-lane road improvement, curb and gutter, sidewalks on both sides, LED streetlights, landscaping. Tolliver Road, similar road, two lanes, curb and gutter, multi-use path. Tolliver Road, similar road, two lanes, curb and gutter, multi-use path on one side, sidewalk on the other. Tolliver Road, we've allowed for a wider pavement to possibly provide for on-road, on-street parking if the development allows in certain areas.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
I know there's been a preference, and I know we've seen different designs in our bikeway stuff, of people who prefer the extra width on the roadway because they wanna ride on the roadway versus a side part and state law changed. Is there a reason why we, we chose not to put the bike lane with a wider pavement on the roadway and went to multi-use? I'm just asking a question.
Well, we have a bike plan, Mr. Moss, and we follow that bike plan. Wayne Wilcox and Parks and Rec, uh, through a collaborative effort, he, in fact, I think he's in the process of updating that right now. So I think for this particular area, you know, he called for an off-road multi-use path. But we generally follow whatever, you know, we go by the plan.
Would you back up one chart? I would tell you, Mr. Moss, that what he's showing you is a wider road. Burton Station is really, because of the constriction, we'd have to buy a ton of real estate and it would be very costly.
Make the explanation, I just...
And what he's showing you is that on-street parking that could just say, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna put a bike path in there, and we'll put the road in the middle, we'll put two bike paths in there. It's an option, but it's just running up to a cul-de-sac, so they're gonna ride up there, turn around, come right back. And so, at this point, we didn't see that, that the spandex crowd, the cycling teams would, would really pursue this.
My only thought when I was looking at it was because we're building some residential in there, people biking it, but you had an explanation, makes sense. Thank you very much. So, yes, sir, and you know, if, if we don't need as much on-street parking here, you know, this was the envision, the vision, so we could possibly turn that into some on-road biking or, you know, a wide shoulder. We'll have to see how that pans out with, when development occurs. The second piece of infrastructure is the improvement to Burton Station Lake, as Dave mentioned earlier. Burton Station Lake is going to receive the drainage from the roadway projects I just mentioned, and it is not adequate to, to handle the, the stormwater runoff. So we have to lower the lake and do these improvements to allow for the, the stormwater runoff. So we're gonna be adding a outlet control structure, upsizing the pipes, and installing a drainage, um, swale here, concrete swale, and tie into an existing system before it goes into Lake Lawson. And all those improvements will lower the lake a little bit to allow for drainage from the roadway to go there. That project is being delivered by way of a cost participation agreement with S&amp;J Trucking. It is a one and a half million dollar project, and it, construction will start in the spring of 2018 and be completed in the fall of 2018. The next piece of infrastructure that we are going to, or Public Utilities is gonna implement, is a sanitary sewer pump station, which is located right adjacent to Tolliver Road, I've shown here, blown up. It is to serve all the development proposed that Mark talked about and we've talked about. It is under design, scheduled to go to construction in the summer of next year, and be complete in summer of 19, fully funded. 2.15 million. And you'll notice here, this is the fire station right next to the pump station. That's the next chart. Fire slash EMS station. It is a 14,300 square foot facility. It is, again, fully funded. Have some facility folks here, if there are any specific questions about this. Scheduled to go to construction in, let's see, where do we have that? I'm sorry, scheduled to go to construction in August of 18, next year, and be complete in November of 19. This proposed fire station will service the Burton Station area, and this chart talks about increased or improved response times for the Burton Station neighborhoods. The next thing I wanted to talk about was proposed future expansion. So where Tolliver Road ends at the railroad, we intend to pick it up, extend Tolliver Road down to Bars Road and out to Thurston, same typical section. This is, will be designed, begin designed next year, but it's not fully funded for construction. Another future plan is to extend Burton Station where we're ending it from Tim Road out to Miller Store Road, probably, quite likely, possibly the same typical section. Again, there's some funding, but it's not fully funded for construction. But those are two future phases that after we complete the current phases that we will pursue. And I think that is the end of my quick presentation, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Phil. John?
What would the CIP process, we get reallocation and accelerated the Burton Station Road construction, how would that improve our ability to market and, and bring that property into more taxable, higher taxable value if that were to take place? If we moved that ahead, how would that help us? And how would that, in that road construction, how would that improve our ability to increase the pace with which that pretty critical piece of property developed? That is a very vital juncture there, I would think that. I mean, I have to answer today, but it'd be interesting to know during the CIP process, Mr. City Manager, as we look to see what things would help us if we made changes would increase our revenue growth.
Barbara?
Well, it's awfully good after so many years to get to this point that we have these things happening in Burton Station. I know Mr. Jones has spent 35 years, I guess, working on this. Back in the day when we had all the other target neighborhoods, I guess all the rest of them have long since been completed, but Burton Station has just had its own unique problems, and it's not from a lack of trying. I know, I know Mr. Jones and staff have been trying and trying, but, you know, in the early years, it was because there were so many different property owners with all kinds of issues with their property, and of course, it was envisioned as being mainly the residential like the others turned out to be and so forth. But, you know, with this SGA plan, I mean, when you look at the fact that we have ownership of such major issues as another city and then the Airport Authority, there's, there's just limits to what, you know, we would be able to do. And so, this particular area is just had its own unique problems. And I know that, you know, we've had a lot of criticism for not getting it done earlier, but it's just been so many different issues that we had no control over.
Yes, ma'am.
But I think that you all have really done a great job of, of, you know, aggressively getting this worked out, and I'm sure there's some changes will probably occur here now. You're, you're getting close when you start putting concrete in, I guess, that it's, it's pretty much a sure thing. But I think being able to, to do all of this drainage work and the fire station is really an added benefit that we had not looked at before. But I, I, I think you all and, and staff and, and, and Mr. Jones are really to be complimented. And I, it's, it's just, looking at how few of the original property owners are still there, I, I, I hope everything is satisfactory with, with the families that have been there all these years, but, you know, it's just been tough.
Well, you know, you, you hit the nail on the head, it wasn't because of a lack of not trying.
Would you like to comment about the families, if I may? I had a meeting with the people, the residents of Burton Station, the people that, that live there now, along with the L&amp;J Gardens people. And we had, I guess, went on for a couple hours, and it went very well. They, they, they liked what we designed, and frankly, they were excited about that property there that used to be part of the golf course, the, the corner piece that's proposed for B2. They were excited about the prospects of what might go in there. So it was a good meeting with them, and, and I, I think we're, I think we're gonna have their support on it.
Well, Mr. Jones, let's get it done.
Yeah.
Hey, Phil, thank y'all very much, Phil and Mark, appreciate it very much.
Thanks, guys.
All right, Holiday Lights update. The lights that Sid couldn't be, here they are. Where's Mike Eason? Mike, we're glad to have you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to be with you. We appreciate the opportunity to update you on the Holiday Lights program, which has become probably one of the most popular events we have at the oceanfront. And a lot, a lot of it's occurred, so I wanna kinda give you a little update and a little background. But back in, in August of this year, Mr. Leahy gave you a very comprehensive report on the issues that we were, we were facing with the Holiday Lights program. And he outlined a lot of, several options, and the decision was made after a lot, a lot of consultation to have a scaled-down show, but still have a show. And that's, that's become a very popular item right now, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about, more about that. So, again, a lot of things have happened since the decision was made and council funded some of the conversion work. First of all, and the biggest thing we had to do was try to find 41,000 bulbs that were 12 volt, which didn't exist in the United States. So with the help of some of our manufacturers in China and some of the local people that we deal with in North Carolina, we were able to find a manufacturer that could make the bulbs in the time we gave them, ship them, air freight to get them here so the work can be done. Also, the displays had to be sent back to Carpenter, who was again, one of our partners, and Beach Events had to put together a crew to start converting some of these, some of these fixtures. But I can tell you that all the fixtures are up, installed and working. So, let me get a little bit into the, the event this year. It's gonna be November 24th through December 31st. It's Sunday through Thursday from 5:30 to 10:00, and then Friday and Saturday from 5:30 to 11:00, obviously because it was a business day. So I know you're, you're asking, okay, well, we opened up last Thursday, how are we doing? Well, I'm, I'm, I've got good news for you. As compared to last year, last year we had 2,849 cars go through from Thursday to Sunday last year. This year, we had 3,636, or an increase of 27%. Now, we opened a, a week later than we did last year, but that's still very favorable, and we, we are hoping, keeping our fingers crossed that this trend will continue. Again, the location is from Second to 21st Street. We, we do have 68 displays. I think initially you were told to be about 50. We're able to do more. We still have a couple 120-volt displays out there, and Bobby's still converting displays as we speak and trying to get more displays out there. Cost of the vehicle, per vehicle, $5 Friday through Sunday, $4 Monday through Thursday, $2 Military Mondays, and $25 for coaches. Now, let me tell you how our competition is, what they're doing. Norfolk Botanical Gardens has raised their prices. They are now $30 on weekends and $25 during the week. So I think our visitors and our residents are getting a, a very good deal this year at being, being at $5. So, moving on to our marketing strategy, these are some of the typical ways we, we would promote Holiday Lights, and that's rack cards, online social media, radio, cable, print, and outdoor advertising. We did get a little boost last week, if you read it, I'm sure you did, from the Virginian Pilot, Stacy Parker did a very nice article about the Holiday Lights, and that probably contributed somewhat, but it's always good to get some good press. I will, I need to address one thing that she mentioned in her article. She said that the Holiday Lights program lost money for three years, 13 to 15. The reason, and we lost 36 the first year, 6,000 the second, and 8 the third. But the reason we were spending more money, and it had to do with the way expenditures, was that we were refurbishing. We had a three-year plan to refurbish all the Holiday Lights in three years, and we started spending more money, so that, that's why the overrun occurred. The other thing I need to mention to you too is that, believe it or not, we pay admissions tax on the Holiday Lights. So just for example, during those three years that she mentioned, 13 through 15, we paid $80,787 in admissions tax. We don't show that and we don't use as our calculation for determining whether it's a, it's a financial success, but we do pay admissions tax. Now, if you look at the lights themselves, we picked probably the most popular fixtures that we have, the one everybody likes to see. The, the fish arch, the poinsettia, which actually was sent back to Carpenter to design. And just, just in case, just to give you a scope on the scale of this, that poinsettia alone has a, a little over 3,500 bulbs on it, and now has 13 transformers. And I'll tell you a little bit more about why the transformers are there. That does not include the candlesticks, so that's just give you an idea of, of the scope of one display and what that takes. Of course, the live the life, the only thing, Mayor, only thing mentioned that's missing on this is Virginia Beach, the greatest city in the world. We may have to add that.
We can do that, we can do that.
And Bobby, make a note of that, we can't do that. The shipwreck, which is again, also another popular item, the, we've added two new Navy displays last year. Of course, we can, we converted that over to 12 volt, and in this case, the photographer was able to capture Santa Claus and reindeer chasing an F-18, which I thought was pretty, pretty ingenious on John Lesko's part to do that. The last example I'm just gonna show you is the American flag, and again, that was totally refurbished. This one is also used in other events, Fourth of July, we'll put it up for Fourth of July, and sometimes we put it up on Veterans Day as well. So, again, something we can also use.
Get the cables.
Yeah.
Talk about a transformer, gosh.
Yeah, well, I, good segue, thank you, Mr. Hanson, into the next. This is just a smaller display, and each one of these little boxes you see mounted on the pole are, are step-down transformers. Basically, what we've done is, we've taken 120 volts, reduced it down to 12, put 12 volts into the sockets, and it's, it's been amazingly bright. We were concerned about the brightness of the bulbs, but hopefully, when you take your ride through, you'd be able to see it. And to Mr. Hanson's read-on-Q comment, here are multi, one of a multitude of number of panels that feed, and the extension cords run everywhere. But if you notice the white where the bugs, plugs are plugged into, those are all GFI boxes and are working just fine. So, so anyway, just to, to, to close out, fortunately, I want to really express our appreciation to Mr. Hanson, Mr. Leahy, Mr. Williams, and Brad Van Damman for, for their interest in, in making this program continue. Also, Public Works Electrical Department was a huge success. A lot of, special thanks to Bobby, John Lesko, and a fellow named Shane Nicely did a lot of removing and installing bulbs. I can't tell you how many times I saw him in there and how many bulbs he actually put in. And also, George Masca and Carpenter, we couldn't have done it without their assistance. They're, they're great partners in this project. So we're keeping our fingers crossed, Mayor. We, hopefully, this is gonna be a successful program. I hope we have an opportunity over the holidays to go through it, and I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Mike, we thank you. Any questions?
Sorry to kinda go way back again, but I know in reading some of the stuff we've been seeing about this, you know, okay, here we're doing all this stuff for the hoteliers and all this thing, but didn't this begin with a couple of ladies coming down and asking, okay, Bobby?
Yeah, Bob, mine and I met with them, and Bobby was there, yeah.
Yeah, some ladies who came down and suggested that we do this. So this did not come out of the industry, it came out of individuals. And it's really become, I think, something that our, our people really...
They love it.
Enjoy. I think, you know, you kinda have to go back sometimes and see why we're doing all this, and I suppose it evolved over the years to, to being something so much more, but it really had its genesis and with the people, and that's why we've done it, because we were here in front of folks who were going to miss this. I haven't heard from a single hotelier who wanted us to do it, I don't think the rest of you.
Well, just to piggyback with Barbara's, I mean, I think it creates a festive environment for the resort, which, but in terms of it being a direct room generator, Barbara's absolutely right. I mean, nobody's coming from, you know, Nebraska to see our Holiday Lights program. But, but I was really surprised at the amount of locals that had contacted me when this thing was on the shop blog, including our mayor, who were very emotional about the fact that we couldn't have it, and the fact that, that you have families that have really taken this part of our city and put it into their annual tradition, I think is really something special. And, you know, the big props to staff and Bobby Malati for, for keeping the lights on, because it was, I was getting a lot of heat from a lot of different directions when we were looking at this thing going on with it. So, thank you very much.
Dave, you wanna add?
Yes, sir. I'd like to close out by thanking Beach Events and Bobby Malati for, he took this on as a personal challenge, that he wasn't gonna let this thing die. Mike Eason for, for figuring out where to find light bulbs. Tom Leahy would tell you, yeah, it's great if you can go find some light bulbs. And I'd like to, I'd like to thank those two for working so hard. And I'd like to thank Tom Leahy for, you know, rolling up his sleeves and not saying quit, but actually figuring out solutions. And as a paid, paid comment from Mr. Leahy, he says, we're in the early stages, we're still in testing, it ain't rained, and we haven't had a nor'easter. So cross your fingers, there's a lot of light bulbs out there, and you saw all those white switches with all them GFA, ground fault, devices and interrupt devices, and what's gonna happen is, we're gonna get that nor'easter, and it's gonna, gonna be, gonna be like fireworks out there, believe me.
He just didn't wanna be known as some rich who stole...
He wanted me to be that guy, so I was already framed as the guy that was gonna turn out the lights, so...
Well, I really do thank...
Guys bailed me out, thank you.
We thank everyone. We thank everyone, because the council was unanimous, as you know, to keep it going. So we thank all of you all for getting it done, okay?
Good job, guys.
All right. Vending planning items.
Carolyn, are you leading now?
Yes, sir.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you. It won't be quite as festive, but it's important nonetheless. A good afternoon. I will very quickly go over the eleven items that we have scheduled for you on December fifth, and then Kevin Kemp is here to talk to you about the evening on December twelfth. All of these items are recommended for approval by both the Planning Commission and the city staff, and on the fifth, we also have two amendments to the zoning ordinance, as well as three amendments, that are documents adopted by reference to our comprehensive plan. Items number one and two are actually interrelated, and we have the same property owner on both of these sites. Both sites are shown on the screen on the left here, and they both have conditional use permits for automobile repair garage. The conditional use permit associated with item one has a three-year time limit on it. The request is to remove that time limit, and in exchange, the property owner will remove the existing conditional use permit associated with the property, which is item number two, which has frontage on Holland Road. So basically, this is a permanent swapping out of the paint booth on the property on Holland Road to the property that fronts Damn Neck Road. Item one also includes a conditional use permit request for the bulk storage of the motor vehicles awaiting repair, and no changes to the building are proposed. And again, item number two is the request to eliminate that conditional use permit on this site. The approved bulk storage yard will remain on this property, and according to the property owner, this site will likely be developed by a right use under the existing B-two zoning. Staff is not aware of any opposition to either item number one or item number two. This applicant currently operates a wellness center within a unit within the shopping center along Virginia Beach Boulevard. This is a request for a tattoo parlor specifically for microblading, which we all know now is the application of permanent makeup. This property is located in the Francis Land House Historic and Cultural District, so it's important to note that they are not changing the exterior of that building or the signage, and staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Item four is a rezoning request of goodwill of Central and Coastal Virginia. They propose to renovate a former bank building along First Colonial Road with some office space, and also occupy that building with a donation site. A rezoning is required as wholesale and distribution activities are not a permitted use in the current O-two office district. As traffic congestion can be an issue along First Colonial Road, the proffers do prohibit any retail sales on this site, and the Planning Commission recommended that the applicant add two additional proffers. The first addition is that the uses are limited on this site to just three: office space, the nonprofit donation center, or a financial institution. And the second added proffer requires that a drop-off bin be located on the rear of the site and that the bin be properly screened. And there is no opposition that we are aware of to that item. Item five is actually a twofold request. It's a request to modify the existing two thousand and seven proffer agreement, as well as rezoning from B-four to PDH-two with an A-12 overlay in order to construct up to one hundred and forty-four new townhomes. In two thousand and seven, City Council approved a rezoning on twenty-six acres to B-four mixed-use commercial, which was to serve as the commercial component to the development of the Spence Farm property. Nearly two hundred thousand square feet of retail and office space was programmed with that rezoning, as well as a six-story, one hundred and fifty-room hotel. Since that time, the market has changed, and the applicant is now requesting to modify their approved proffered plan and rezone twelve of those twenty-six commercial acres to the PDH-two in order to construct the new townhomes. The proposed dwellings will be of a similar style and scale of what is occurring, what is under construction now on the Spence Farm property, and the applicant did meet with several of the civic groups in the vicinity. There was opposition back in two thousand and seven when this came forward, but staff is not aware of any opposition at this point with this application. Item six is a request to rezone a little more than three and a half acres along Baker Road from our seven-point-five residential to conditional A-18 apartment district in order to construct up to forty-seven townhouses at a density of twelve-point-nine units per acre. As evidenced by the zoning map on the right, you'll see that multiple rezonings have occurred in recent years to the apartment districts, specifically A-36, A-24, and A-12. So we believe this request is consistent with the trends that we are seeing in this part of Virginia Beach. The two thousand square foot units are proposed as two and a half stories tall with vinyl exteriors. Each of the units will contain either a one-car or two-car garage. A single ingress egress point is proposed off of Baker Road, and then an emergency-only access is proposed from Connie Lane. The applicant actually owns the property adjacent to Connie Lane, and ultimately will construct two new single-family dwellings on those lots. That portion of the property is not part of this request. The applicant did meet with some residents, and as a result of that, actually purchased some of their properties, so there is no opposition to this application. Item seven is a conditional use permit request for a small cell wireless facility. As the proposed antenna will be located on the top of a new thirty-foot high pole, a conditional use permit is required. The proposed location of the antenna is near a swimming pool. It's in a very low visibility area from the adjacent streets, and the pole is actually designed as a light pole, so it will be rather inconspicuous. This request does meet the requirements outlined in the zoning ordinance, and staff is not aware of any opposition. Item eight is likely one that you have been briefed on previously. It's to rezone a portion of the former Owls Creek Golf Course, which ceased operation in two thousand and sixteen. Specifically, it's a request to rezone almost seventy acres of property that zoned our two-point-five residential and I-one light industrial to conditional I-one light industrial to ultimately construct a five-hundred-thousand-square-foot manufacturing facility. The site is located within the greater-than-seventy-five noise zone, within the accident potential zones two, and also within the historic Sea-Tac and vicinity suburban focus area nine. So this use is consistent with the recommendations of the SFA. The site's also located in the Special Economic Growth Area One East Oceana, which is known as SEGA One, and the policies for the eastern portion of the SEGA do recommend light industrial uses, very limited retail, and extra buffering to protect the residential neighborhoods in the vicinity. Based on the Planning Commission's directive, a revised landscape plan has been submitted that depicts additional plant material between the proposed parking lot and Bird Neck Road, and this will provide additional screening to the neighbors across Bird Neck Road to the east. The submitted elevations of the forty-eight-foot-tall building depict a contemporary industrial design. Our economic development staff met with members of the community twice during their outreach, and there were four speakers in support at the Planning Commission meeting, and then five speakers in opposition. The speakers in opposition related concerns related to the potential for the increase in crime and traffic, their perception of inadequate public notice about this rezoning request, the potential negative impact to both their property values and wildlife in the area, the perception of the existing overabundance of vacant industrially-zoned property throughout Virginia Beach, and then the potential proliferation of industrial rezoning requests in this part of the city. The Planning Commission did recommend approval unanimously to you at their meeting. Item number nine is a result of a two-year effort that was spearheaded by Councilman Earn. Ashby Moss with our SGA office is here, and she was our lead staffer for this effort. In October twenty-fifteen, a steering committee was formed to discuss some of the issues and concerns that we've been hearing since the adoption of the Form-Based Code in two thousand and twelve. Interestingly, in most cases, these concerns were often resolved through some explanation or education about how the code actually works. The steering committee, which is listed on the right, guided the work of the staff, and at least nine public hearings were held. As a result of the steering committee's work, some policy changes are recommended to address concerns related to overmassing of building on smaller properties, and also the lack of green space that's required to really create that resort feel that we are looking for in this part of Virginia Beach. Other proposed changes include corrections and clarification to the text to simplify the language in the code, and also reorganization to improve the flow of the code. The proposed amendments were vetted through the steering committee, as well as through several stakeholder groups. Some of them are listed on the slide there. So to sum this up, the revised oceanfront resort district Form-Based Code really will still retain the vast majority of the policies that were in the two thousand and twelve version that was adopted, but this presents them in a simpler and an easier-to-understand format. And staff certainly recommends approval, and the Planning Commission put this on their consent agenda. To piggyback on the work of the Form-Based Code, Christine Gaye with the SGA office was our lead on an amendment to the city code to permit small creative markets to be hosted on private property by a sponsoring brick-and-mortar business. Both the Rack and the Vibe District have endorsed that amendment, and also Christine worked on amendments to the oceanfront resort district design guidelines. These guidelines were originally adopted in two thousand and twelve, and accompanied our Form-Based Code adoption then. These revised voluntary guidelines are now a bit simpler, and they are now reorganized to follow a similar format of the Form-Based Code. Item ten also includes two additions to the documents to be adopted by reference to the comprehensive plan, and as with the oceanfront resort design guidelines, these two additions were drafted with stakeholder input, and they can be voluntarily applied to both public and private projects. Emily Archer of the SGA led this staff effort to create the Vibe Connectivity Plan and the Connector Park Design Guidelines, and both of these documents will provide us guidance as we review projects in these areas on the oceanfront. And Planning Commission also placed these items on the consent agenda. And the last item is two zoning ordinance amendments. As you know, the city of Virginia Beach owns many properties and leases these properties, often in the oceanfront resort district. These properties are frequently used to hold concerts, festivals, and other similar events. This amendment creates a definition for these sites of municipal oceanfront entertainment venue, and will allow the city council to approve sign packages on these sites. The second part of this zoning ordinance amendment is in response to concerns that we've heard from local business owners regarding shared parking. Currently, the shared parking requires that a ten-year agreement be recorded with the clerk of court, so this amendment would eliminate that necessity to record it, and that it would actually be filed with the zoning office. So this will certainly simplify the process and save time and money for our customers, and staff is not aware of any opposition to this item.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question way back on the item five. You don't have to pull that up, but the Spence Crossing, this is taking away part of the commercial, but still leaving some, I think. Now, I know that this, and I think you mentioned it, that originally it was to include a hotel.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, we have often been saying that we really needed a hotel in this quarter. Have they given up on the hotel idea?
On this property, yes, ma'am.
I'm surprised, because I thought, you know, we were experiencing a lot of demand, especially with all of the, now the medical, as well as the athletic in the area, and...
I think we're still going forward with this.
But I mean, this was to have been on private property and a private investment. I'm...
I hear that.
Yes.
Fish is green fire, that's for the issue. That's why all those people are using those hotels.
So the hotel is gone, but it's still going to remain B-four?
Yes.
That's pretty intense.
About fourteen acres.
I think we did B-four because of the hotel, so we're going to have B-four commercial out there?
It'll be a mix of office and retail, about sixty to eighty thousand square feet, rather than the two hundred thousand square feet that was originally programmed.
But B-four doesn't have a height limitation, so what are we going to do about that out there? Oh, well, we can talk about this one.
Yes, we can look at that, and I'm not sure...
B-four was especially because of the hotel, so if the hotel's gone away, I'm not so sure we need it to be B-four, but we can talk about that.
But probably a good point, because we look in a recent article in the Wall Street Journal about three or four weeks back, that nationally, retail is overbuilt by about thirty-six percent across the country, and because of other features, just business retail is shrinking. And the reason why it's not happening, there's no capital investors, because there's what? No return on investment. So you're going to see this on a bigger scale than what we normally see as a national phenomenon.
All right, we'll get into the next thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin, we're glad to have you. Carolyn, we thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sessoms. We'll go through December twelfth. We have a lighter agenda for you with five items. All were recommended for approval by staff and Planning Commission. Jump right in. The first item is twofold. It's a modification to a conditional use permit and a street closure. Basically, what happened is last year, last October, this applicant came in for a CUP for auto sales and rental and auto repair garage. Since then, they have purchased the underlying fees to the street, wished to close the street, and now that area is to be included with the CUP, so a modification is required. Applicant is renovating the outside of the building, demolishing five thousand square feet in the back. They are planning substantial landscaping along Bonnie Road and are asking for a deviation from the required landscape down Rodriguez Drive, which is on the right. Reason being, it's directly adjacent to CarMax, and so they wish to take that landscaping and buff up along Bonnie Road, so staff is supportive of that. No opposition is known on this request. The second one, earlier today, you heard from the aquarium. This is a request by the aquarium for approval of their new sign package. This is one part of their new branding efforts, and will provide greater recognition on general booth and more up-to-date signs. Detailed, the package includes a new freestanding sign at each primary entrance. That's pictured there on the left. Each sign will feature LED screen, which will display events and exhibits that are going on on the site. There's a new building sign provided on the pavilion building, new parking signs at each parking area, and temporary changeable signs on the light poles in the parking lot and along general booth. The last request, and this is something you've probably seen in the past, they request temporary sign, it's either a banner, or sometimes they have, you know, inflatable spiders or whatnot, on the aquarium building, and those will only be there while an event is taking place or exhibit there. And staff and Planning Commission recommend approval. The next item is something you should be familiar with, as you were briefed on it, and this is a renovation to the ITA plan. It's been about a year process. Staff has been working with WPL, VHB, and Miles Agency, and Barry and Carolyn's staff, especially Dr. Stephen White and Robert Davis, have worked hard on this. As you know, land ownership in the ITA has changed greatly since it was first considered. The city has bought a lot of land. This modification reflects a new plan, taking that into account, you know, specifically the bio-research park, agricultural research, and the environmental center, and this has been recommended for approval.
Well, this, I think, is a year in coming. I mean, we've been studying this for a long time, so this isn't a strategic growth area. This is a economic growth area, and I think what we see here is different from the Burton Station area in that now the city is the largest property owner. We have a lot more discretion about what we can recommend and what we can make happen. So that is a big reason for doing this update. But I was really surprised when we had a speaker, I guess, at the last open-mic night that was confused, was confusing this with a construction plan that the city has, rather than just a comprehensive plan. And so I hope we can, have you had questions about that? Because this certainly isn't saying the city is going to build this, this, and this. This is, these are the kinds of things that we do with planning and saying, these are the kinds of things that we might want to...
Yep, it's guidance for years to come as this area develops, yes.
Right, so I hope we can, we can make sure that that's clear, and we're not recommending that the city is going to spend all this. And of course, we do have the road system, but that's another big change, you know, without the Southeastern Expressway, you know, changing the road system in there, yes, we'll be building some roads over time, but I think this is a very... yes, we'll be building some roads over time, but I think this is a very good road plan. It clears up some of that other problem we had with that old WestNet major collector, and I think this is really a good plan for the people in that area are going to be happy with it. But other than normal infrastructure, this isn't a plan that the city is going to construct all of this stuff, so just so we don't have confusion out there with public.
Absolutely. And staff agrees. We think it's a great, great plan. All right, the fourth item is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. What this amendment does is replaces the use of servants' quarters with a new use called limited-use accessory dwelling units. Just to give you a brief history, since the amended ordinance in 1973, servants' quarters have been in use only in the R40 district. These were specifically for people that were employed on the property and served as caretakers, gardeners, or that sort of thing. Well, we've seen a trend recently where these accessory buildings, you know, the people who live there are mostly family members. You know, I'm sure there are still servants and caretakers that do this, but we felt it was a positive change to update the ordinance to include a new use that includes members of the immediate family that can live in these accessory dwellings. It's still only permitted in the R40. There's still the same size restrictions of 800 square feet, and caretakers can still live there, but it opens it up to immediate family, which coincides with the use we're seeing. And the last item is another amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding business and vocational schools. You know, there are the Strayers, the ECPIs, these large schools that come through and may have impacts on the community, but a majority of what we see are the barber who wants to lease out a chair and learn how to cut hair. What this ordinance does is allows the smaller operations to go through by right. We've done a similar thing with recreation and churches. In this case, any business vocational school less than 7,500 square feet is permitted by right. Above that, still requires the use permit. And we feel this is a positive change, and it will remove a majority of the use permits we see.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. City Council discussion on the five-year forecast?
Thank you. You know, I thought we got a good forecast, and I spent a lot of time even before we got it, and I shared with all of you my own thoughts. Because I do think, a couple times, I think that even though our biggest industry is defense, many people are really ignorant of just how it works and how it gets funded, and just what the trend is. Of course, I'm limited in my discussions in talking about stuff that's in the, in the public domain, but I, recently, this is something that just recently came out, but I hope you all found instructive just how iffy the authorization bill in terms of $700 million is becoming actual appropriation. It's a long way from there. So I do think we have to be cautious as we look at that. And the downside of having that huge foundation in our economy is, we don't control how it grows. So therefore, the amount of GDP growth that the private sector has to generate to get larger GDP growth is probably about twice to two and a half times the national average, which is very difficult to achieve, because there are three fundamental pressures that are across the country, if not across the globe, that are driving slow economic growth in developed countries. First and foremost is aging population. The two biggest ways to grow GDP is increasing the number of workers earning wages or labor productivity that drives up higher wages. Those are the two principal ways of driving GDP. No one is suspecting that we're going to be making big headwinds. So we're looking at probably 2% to 2.5% GDP growth at best.
That's what you said.
And probably not even that here. So I think, so what does that mean? I think we have to be much more judicious, which I asked a question earlier today about relooking at our capital improvement program, is, we might have to rethink that in terms of putting more vertical investment in an area to get a critical enough mass to make a substantial change that makes an area that might grow more slowly, but with a more concentrated vertical funding, would grow at a much faster pace and bring revenues online sooner than what the CIP has it now would provide. That, that means some people might not get something they want, but in the long run, the city would be better off from a revenue generation point of view, taking the pressure off having to assign those fixed costs to homes. It's just something we have to look at, where all those opportunities exist. I think there probably are some. I think the other aspect I thought in the report that was understated, I don't know anyone who thinks healthcare costs are going to grow at 3%. I know that's the assumption in our five-year forecast, but I can't find anyone who shares that. I mean, it's more like 5, 6, and some even say 8. So I think we need to understand, what if our healthcare costs grow, not below the national average, but actually grow at the national average? How does that change those graphs in terms of our revenues relative to expenses? Because I just don't think that's going to hold true. I hope I'm wrong, but there's no one out there in the, that I can find that's jumping on board a 3% projection. Now, if in fact we're going to hold our labor cost to 2%, which we haven't traditionally done, then that holds true. But if we're going to do something different, because I know we have some things to deal with wage compression, things to deal with public safety, so if that doesn't really, where we're at, then that 2% also isn't realistic. It may be an assumption, but I don't think, if it isn't reflect what we're really thinking, that we're going to go do, then that gap is bigger than we think, and we're not engaging the public soon enough and well enough to explain to them where we're at. So I think that's, gives a false picture of where we are in terms of our sustain ourselves at the current tax rates and revenue rates based on those assumptions, because I think the assumptions have not proven to be historically true. The other part that I think that we didn't recognize in the five-year forecast is that we're going to be able to accept, and I don't believe we can accept, the current level of investment we make in drainage, which is separate from extreme weather events investments. Drainage deals with just the remediation of trying to get us, I guess, up to the new 10-year standard that we've adopted, so very few neighborhoods meet that, I would suspect, because we've increased the amount of rainfall to 12 inches and a bunch of other things, versus the extreme weather event investments. And that those, and I don't think they're going to be able to wait out till six years from now to start addressing. So I think that's another assumption I think we've understated in terms of the liabilities that we face. And so when you think about that there isn't much we can do in the short run, the first three years, I think, of that five-year forecast will be difficult to influence the GDP in a significant way. I do things like the things that just happened at Owls Creek. I'd take 100 of those over a dome site any day, in terms of generating jobs and income, but those are the types of things, we need to find out, how can we reallocate our CIP investment dollars that we do have to make more of those opportunities possible, if they can? And that's, we've got to ask staff. But I don't think we can take the incremental status approach and spread our money over a bunch of places and try to do a little bit for everyone, and that might sound, but when you have less discretionary money, which we do, I think that's a fair assessment, and less debt capacity, which I think is a fair assessment, then you've got to invest it more strategically to get big results, or you think better bets. And I think we've done some of that, and I think the Burton Neck Road part of that is good. Little money on our part, big return for the city as a whole. So that's why I think, how do we get more investments? And then, when you looked at, the other thing you talked about, which I don't think we've ever really understood, why this per capita sales tax collection in Chesapeake is higher than Virginia Beach? I don't know if we'll ever know that answer, but it still should concern all of us, that they have relatively no tourism, but their per capita sales tax collection is significantly, I mean, significantly higher, over $500 per capita higher than Virginia Beach. I think we've got to figure out, still, I think some, we've got to figure out how to understand that, and how to capitalize on improving our per capita sales tax collection, because clearly that's a big, big benefit. But also, the report talked about that our households were shrinking, and that was part of the explanation of why the median income that was falling below the average in part was the single-income households, and in fact, that they're growing. And you may recall, in the Virginia Tech study that we got, they talked about the fact that what we had was an increasing number of single-family households, single-income earner households, and therefore, we were increasing the number of our population that were quote-unquote financially stressed because of that. So I, so I think we've got to, we've got to look at, and the reason why I mention that is, if you look at that last chart, which wasn't in our packet, but it showed, where 40% of our people who work leave the city to work, and 30% of the people that come into the city to work. Well, if you look at and go into our BOM prospectus, and you look at the number of people who are employed in Virginia Beach in the private sector, and you look at that average weekly wage, the last report that I saw, it comes out to less than the region's average wage, which we saw, which was $23.62, if my memory serves me correctly. So, so our private sector average weekly wage, assuming they're working 40-hour weeks, is still at less hourly wage than the region as a whole, and I suspect that's because of Newport News, and it's the shipyard, it's Metro, it's those kind of things that are driving it. But it does talk about fundamentally, when we're looking at where we do put our incentives, incentivizing apartments, and incentivizing retail, you know, those are not where, those are not high-employment jobs, those are not high-wage jobs. You can look at the average salaries and look at it, and those are not high, in large part because they're frequently also low-margin industries from a profitability point of view. And to have high wages, you've got to have high margins of profit and higher labor productivity, which gets back to your point, Mr. Mayor, which I agree with 100%, is investments in, what? Technical certification education, which Dr. Cook, we've got a lot of college education people, right? But it's not the skill set that the employers want to hire. That's a long-term strategy as well. That's not overnight. But, but we can't shape that chart in the back, that trend where it shows revenue is growing, expenses is growing faster than revenue. We can't deliver what I think the things we need to do, capital investments in roads and in flooding, on that revenue curve without raising tax rates. And I, and I, and I talked to this, when I go out to town, I talked very frankly about that. We can't, so we've got to figure out ways somehow to maybe relook at our base cost, and we've got to figure out how to slow our cost growth of our legacy status quo, which is what companies are doing today. How do we reduce the cost, or the growth in the cost of our foundational cost curve, so that when revenue comes in, we create breathing space? Now, one way to create breathing space, I know you've heard me talk about this before, is when you look at that expense curve, it's overstated by about $30 million bucks. It's that $30 million of over-budgeted salaries. Now, we have to ask ourselves, this is a question, do we, to have this money at the end of the year to do little stuff, project here and there, is it better to harvest...
Or to balance the budget?
Well, yes, but, but we've never used all that amount to balance the budget.
I agree.
So do you take some risk of that 4% over-budgeting and go to 2, and take that 2% revenue and use that 2% revenue for what? Targeted CIP investments that help us what? Generate and create jobs in economic development? It's an opportunity cost not to be deploying that money more aggressively to generate future revenue. It's a point. And these are the opportunities that I think in the five-year forecast, when it comes across with the data information, that those aren't highlighted. And I just wanted to make sure that, that people, I'm sure you all have spent as much time as I have looking at this, I felt like there's other things that are going on, which I won't repeat all of them here, but there's a lot of things, including this tax reform, however it goes out, will need to be looked at. But there's a lot of issues and signals that are saying, we are fundamentally transitioning, and wish Ben were here, because I've been whole lot of supportive of his IT initiatives, is, because we are fundamentally changing where the money is made, and we're going to have to rethink, both with our legislators and ourselves, and I'm sure you've heard this from other people, the revenue basis of how we finance government to get to where people want to go, because this, this taxing wealth approach, which is personal property and homes, and which basically taxes people at some point out of their homes, and if the federal tax policy changes, like you're going to be capped at $10,000 property tax, I can assure you, a lot of people are going to be much more sensitive about property tax rates than they are today. But we've got, we've got to be thinking about that, Mr. Mayor, and my peers, as to, when we look at this upcoming budget, don't just do it incrementally. I think we really have to, I think the public's more farther ahead than we are in thinking that we need some kind of, almost radical change, because that's unfair, but some order of magnitude departure from inertia. You know, the old phrase is inertia, it's a terrible thing to waste. But the bottom line is, there's, there's, there's some change, I think, that we need to make. And I think that the council as a whole has to tell the public, not just this data point, but what does this mean to them if we don't do, change our business? Then we're just on that status quo glide path, which says, too much requirement at the end of the money. And if we don't change that, it means we're three years out or two years out with our tax rate. Anyway, I appreciate the time you've given me to share that with you, but I think this is an important document and is worthy of discussion.
And thank you, and I don't want to hold this up, but I don't disagree with a lot of what you said, and I've certainly read what you presented. You know, the defense dollar's out of our control.
I said that.
You know, and a lot of these issues you bring up are out of our control, but I do think it gets back to what we can control. Now, let me also sit back and say, we are locked in step about gainful employment in this city. You know, the biomed, everything, and this council's locked in step on that. We want that. We want the training to change, and I believe we've made great strides, and I think you'd agree with me, from where we were as far as getting people the proper training. I also am one that believes in growing revenues. Now, let me sit back and say to you, I'm not saying go raise the tax, but I'm saying growing revenues. Those jobs that you just mentioned grow revenues.
I agree with that.
But, but at the same time, we have something, and if you go back and look, that has succeeded during this terrible recession, and it's tourism. You and I agree that neurotourism brings a positive line. I mean, you have said to me that...
Yes, I don't know if...
You don't necessarily agree with the amount.
Correct.
But, but you agree it is positive.
Correct.
I would sit back and say to you, opportunities like that, we should be focused, you know, single shot on, because we need, we can't do it with just one thing. And I think, truthfully, one of the reasons we've gotten through, you know, these last six to eight years, is because of the investments we've made over the years. And again, it could be $50 million into the general fund, or it could be $25 million in general fund. You know, I, you know, we can sit back, but we do have good, solid evidence that it's a significant amount of money after these things that are paid for by not you and not me, by people visiting our city. And it's so competitive out there across the country now, what is every state trying to do now? They're trying to do more investment to get people to visit where they live, that don't need a school, you know, don't have those expenses, but yet come and pay a significant amount of taxes in that place.
Many economists would say some of those are ill-placed investments.
But, but I think we have evidence, though, to be fair.
I don't, so that's so true. If that is true...
Well, okay, I don't want to get, get so much sex.
You've raised tax rates and personal tax rates and fees all during that period, so I don't know where the dividend is, but I didn't get it.
Okay, but go back, John. If they had to be raised, they probably had to be raised a heck of a lot more if that hadn't have been done.
That's, I don't know if that's true.
Well, John, I try to be fair with your comments. I think, you have said to me publicly, and we're in agreement, tourism brings money to the bottom line of the city. We get more than we spend, correct?
I said that's right.
Why wouldn't we want to grow that if we have something good?
I don't know that it's not, that we couldn't invest our money and grow somewhere else faster and get more higher-paying jobs.
I welcome that. Let's put that on the table. Let's find those solutions. I am for those jobs. I'm for investing in them. I'm your biggest cheerleader. We're at, let's be, let's, go ahead, Barbara, I'm done.
But, you know, the other really big unknown we have facing us is, you know, when we're getting into this whole thing with the flooding and the, and the sea level rise and all of that, and that's, that's a big unknown out there, and it's pretty much out of our control, but it's something we definitely have said is our top priority for addressing.
And we need money.
And, you know, when we look at the types of storms that, by the grace of God, missed us this year, but what if we had picked on one of those? We certainly have to have that money some there to be able to function with until we can get reimbursed, if we do get reimbursed. But I think that's a big unknown, and it's something that we're really going to have to factor into all of this, in this budget year. And, you know, when we talk about the mortgage taxes and all of that kind of stuff, we still don't know what the, the, these insurance companies are going to wind up doing with raising their rates and how things are going to change because of flood insurance and so forth, and that whole flood insurance factor could cause somebody to be taxed out of their home in another fashion.
And I talked about it in my announcement.
So we really have, this is a really big thing that I think we have to face this coming budget year, and...
On that, I'm in agreement.
I mean, I'm certainly thinking that we don't want to cut things too close, because I think we have to... because I think we have to be prepared for that unknown that's going to come at some point.
All right, great conversation. Any others? Willinger.